Call the meeting to order. Please join me with the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. First up, we have recognition of AP scholars.
Thank you. The College Board Advanced Placement Program recognizes high school students who have demonstrated outstanding college-level achievement through their performance on advanced placement exams. Two hundred Hudson High School students were award winners this past school year. Over two-thirds of the scholars graduated in spring 2019. AP Scholar Award is granted to students who receive scores of three or higher on three or more AP exams. Hudson had eighty-eight AP scholars. AP Scholar with Honor is granted to students who receive an average score of at least 3.25 on all AP exams taken, and scores of three or higher on four or more of these exams. And we had thirty-seven scholars with honor. AP Scholar with Distinction is granted to students who receive an average score of at least 3.5 on all AP exams taken, and scores of three or higher on five or more of these exams. We had seventy-five scholars with distinction. National AP Scholar is granted to students in the United States who receive an average score of at least four on all AP exams taken, and scores of four or higher on eight or more of these exams. And Hudson has thirteen AP -- no, I don't think I counted that right. Nine. Nine AP scholars. I think it was thirteen last year. But overall, our numbers are up. In 2016, we had one hundred and sixty-six total scholars. 2017, one hundred and seventy-six. 2018, one hundred and eighty-three. And as I mentioned, in 2019, two hundred AP scholars. So, very pleased to share such good news, the outstanding work of our students.
Excellent. Thank you, Sandy. And let's give them a round of applause even though they're not here. Do we have any citizens' requests to speak? All right, then moving on to reports for superintendent and start of school update.
So, can you hear me? Is that working?
Nope.
It's on, but it's not working.
You can use mine.
Can you hear me now?
A little closer.
I don't know, maybe it's not working.
This way?
No.
Thought I heard it.
They're working down here.
Hello? Hello?
Check, check. Now? This one's okay.
Thought maybe you were going to hand it to me like the Bob Barker microphone from The Price is Right. He always had that really long microphone. Anyways, getting back to the superintendent's report. So, start of school update. We had a great start to school since our last board meeting. A couple of events have happened. We had district welcome back. It was a well-received. We had a lot of positive feedback from our staff. We had kids performing for our staff, and there was a lot of positive energy. Nice job with the wellness walk. Our HR department, Andrea and her team, put that on. We had tremendous involvement with staff on that. And then we had the start of school. And I would say that this year, at least for the five years that I've been here, it was the best transportation start of school that we've had. It really, really went well. I think the first day, we managed to pick everybody up, which is always a plus. And we got everybody home within, you know, a reasonable amount of time. It's continued to improve. I think Andrea said last drop-off this evening was, what, 4:54? Is that right, Andrea? So, that was -- transportation's really been a great success. You know, one of the challenges we're working through right now, we've had some folks that have been less than happy with our -- some of our food and nutrition changes that we've made, and we're taking that feedback and making some adjustments. And I think the adjustments that are going to be made, I think, should be well-received by the community. And the last piece with the start of school update is the back-to-school barbecue that we have coming up on Thursday. It'll be right here at the high school at 5:30. It's for all staff and their families. Board members are welcome to come and attend, and it's where the administrative team will be serving for the staff. And right now, we have several hundred people that have already RSVP'd, so it should be a lot of fun. We tied it this year to a volleyball game instead of a football game, so kind of rotate around the different sports and some of the different things that we have, or different activities we have going on in the fall. So, that's kind of the back-to-school or the start-of-school update. We'll have numbers for you guys as far as enrollment numbers in -- at the end of September here. Once we get our third Friday count, we'll be going through that through our September work session. Strategic planning update. This is, if you remember, this is our work with Studer. So, you would have gotten, or you should have gotten, there's been invites that have gone out to the community to invite people to be a part of our stakeholder groups, to really kind of provide us feedback on areas that we need to focus on, and also get some feedback on some of our existing strategic plans and our existing kind of mission and vision, vision statements. So, our representative from Studer will be leading focus groups all day on Tuesday and all day on Monday, September 30th and October 1st. On September 30th, which leads into the second, or the third item on there, the board will be spending about an hour with their representative from Studer. She'll be kind of talking about the whole process and what that looks like, and also getting some feedback from you guys as well. But essentially, the process, what happens is we -- she'll lead each of these different groups. We have student groups, parent groups, community groups, teacher groups, non-certified staff groups, just a variety of different community member groups that we're putting together. And then what she'll do is she'll do a theme analysis of what we get back, and then from that theme analysis, she'll bring that back to the administrative team, our Hudson lead team, which is the leaders across the district, and we'll start building kind of what we think is a strategic plan or strategic focus for the district. It's kind of like a three- to five-year strategic plan. It'll come to the board to get feedback as we're working through that process, and then ultimately, in the end, it'll come to the board for final approval of that process as well. So, we're working through that. It's a process that we hope to have completed here over the next four or five months, and so that's a piece that's coming up. The change of location, which is C on here, so September 30th, so we are going to meet for the board work session in the -- here at the high school. It's in the large group instruction space downstairs in the east wing because since we'll be running focus groups all day long at the high school, different groups, and also then there'll be some focus groups even after she meets with you guys, in an effort because everything's scheduled so tightly, we just thought it'd be easier to just move the work session, since it's a work session, over to the high school instead of having her go back and forth between the two and losing some of that time. So, that's kind of where we're at in a nutshell as we get ready as we've started school. It's been, like I said, a great, great start, and we keep knocking on wood, and things are going well.
So, will that location be changed on board members' calendars, then? The -- that'll get noted. So, downstairs, east wing, though.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you for your reports. Next up is curriculum process update. And Dave, is that you?
Yes, it is. Thank you. I'll start off, and then I'll hand it over to Sandy in a little bit, but tonight, we'd like to update you on our curriculum improvement process, which guides the development of all of our 4K through 12 curriculum. It's a six-phase process, which the first three phases are focused on development, while the last three phases are focused on implementation. We follow a process called Understanding by Design, or UBD. This process is often referred to as backwards design because it starts with the end in mind. Without such a process, you really run the risk of beginning focusing on the learning experiences without a really clearly defined path and a set of outcomes. The three overarching phases are aligned directly with the third, first three phases of our process, which I'm going to explain in just a second here. And thank you very much. So, phase one, we refer to as identifying desired results. And the key question that guides this phase is what should students know and understand and be able to do? So, this is where you define the outcomes. And we focus those outcomes in three areas. The first is called enduring understandings. These are the lifelong lessons you hope students to get from the instruction. Then we have essential questions. These are the key questions that you'd want a student to be able to answer and respond to. And then finally, at the most granular level, is the priority standards, where we look at all the standards associated with the course and define our priority standards. Then we move into phase two, which is determining assessment evidence. So, this is where we ask the question, okay, so we've said what we want students to be able to do, but how will we know that they are able to do that? And in that phase, we develop the summative, interim, and formative assessments, which we've talked about a few times, and we make sure that they're aligned to the essential questions and our priority standards. Finally, we have phase three, which is planning the learning experiences. So, often when we think about curricular development, this is where the mind goes. We think about teachers in a room saying, okay, what are we going to teach? How are we going to teach it? That's actually the third phase. And in there, we plan instruction that is -- that we make sure we're including all the key elements that we've designed earlier. We match the experiences back to the predetermined assessments to guarantee alignment. Just real quickly about the UBD framework. Three things that it helps us do. First of all, the backwards planning. It helps us make sure that we have a long-term focus and that we're always aimed at our desired results, and it helps avoid the common problem of treating the textbook as the curriculum rather than simply a resource. Secondly, by regularly reviewing the units and curriculum for fidelity enhances the quality and effectiveness of instruction for all students. And most importantly, the UBD framework is a continual improvement process aimed to improve student learning. Our curriculum specialist and our teaching and learning department, we focus on the process. We're the process experts, not the content experts. That is purely the domain of the teachers. With that, I'm going to hand it over to Sandy, who will talk about our reports this year and as well as an update of where we are with each curricular area.
Thank you. As Dave mentioned, the district has a six-year improvement process for all ten curricular areas. We divide the areas up by year with large core areas, usually the only one in that phase, and that's mainly for budgetary reasons. So, you'll see social studies, science, math, and ELA usually in their own area with some of the smaller ones grouped together. We call them phases, and as you can see, we've made an adjustment. This past year, the CTE areas just made it through phase one, and so we are putting them now into phase two, where they'll be working on assessments. Teams of teachers then go through the various stages that Dave described, and they go through that process facilitated by a member of the teaching and learning team. So, to bring you updates, then, we'll look at the board presentations. Teaching and learning will once again provide updates to the board throughout the 2019-20 school year at both board work sessions and board meetings. There'll be a mix of curricular presentations, assessment result updates, educator effectiveness updates, and committee work that we'll be sharing. We look forward to highlighting the outstanding work of our staff and our ongoing efforts to continuously improve in all areas of teaching and learning. Any questions?
Any questions? Okay. And that's how we start off with topics for action. And do we have a motion pursuant to the language regarding expenditures for consent agenda items?
Mr. President, I would move approval of the consented items and that the chief financial officer and operations officer be authorized to pay bills in the amount of
Second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, motion passes. And we have...
Just real quick, I just want to interrupt you.
Yes.
We had one retirement that is just added into the packet as of Friday. Want to congratulate Sandy down at the end of the table there. Sandy Kovach put in for her retirement effective the end of the year. I did change it in the board pack real quick before you voted on it. It had it effective two months ago, so we're going to have -- she's going to stick around with us for the next 10 months. But no, we're so excited for Sandy and for Mark, her husband, but it's a big loss for us because she's done outstanding things for the district. She's been in the district for 15 years, and prior to being in Hudson, she was in education for 25, so this is year number 40. Is that right, Sandy? So, very fortunate to have her.
And yes, let's show our appreciation, Sandy. So, we've got all year to do more speeches. All right. All right. Move...
I need a full year still to pick her brain and make sure we don't lose any knowledge here.
That's right. That's right. No, thank you for all your work, Sandy, and look forward to working for the rest of this year as well. So, now, coming up on our preliminary budget, this is the proposed budget, and I assume, Tim, you'll be leading us through this as you have for the last six months.
Sure. So, I'm just going to run through on this. This is the one you've seen several times before with a few different versions. So, this is the last one going into the annual meeting, and so the -- I'll just highlight some of the changes that happened between the last time you saw this, a couple of weeks ago. So, we did -- we go up into the property tax section. So, your -- the property tax levy reflects the addition of the 550, which actually was already in there, and then the balance of the remaining surplus that was down at the bottom of that, and that wound up to be 229, and I'll run through that very quickly, how we got there with that. So, that's that first, that's that first line item. And then I'll just jump down to the expenditure side, the difference there, the changes there. Again, when you look at, one of the changes we were looking at was E-rate eligibility with some additional technology infrastructure. E-rate gives us funding of about 40% to 50% back on our expenditures in things like technology. So, we also have a balance there that's sitting with the federal government that we don't want to get, let grow too large. So, this was an opportunity to pick up and improve some of our infrastructure with additional switches, that type of thing. So, that's underlying 400. And so then, we also reflect some additional E-rate funding because of that. So, those are the major changes going through. We go down to the bottom under the general fund subtotal. The transfer to capital projects fund balances was discussed at the last meeting. That was 550, and that's been moved up into that line 300, which was other purchase services. And then the other additional amount left over was also moved there, so that was 229,000. So, line 300 went up by 779,000 to account for those long-term capital improvement projects. And then if you go down, if you go further down that page, the other change again was under the committed or unassigned fund balance. That's the addition to contribution to capital fund balance. So, that was at 550. Again, that's been moved, moved up to the top under line 300, and then projected and assigned fund balance has a slight change, as well as then correspondingly the percentage. So, that's the first. Get through that summary page. Any questions on the summary page? If not, I'll move on. Then we've got the mill rate and the mill rate history, and I'll just skip down to the very bottom of that section. So, from 2019 to 2020, the valuation that is at 4.6 million will be final in middle of October, when the Department of Revenue releases that number. Right now, the 10-point, a little over 10% increase should be fairly close to what we wind up with as a final number. And you can see, going all the way over to the right, the mill rate will drop from 1051 to 1035, so about a one and a half percent decrease in the mill rate. And if you go down to the very bottom of that, you can see how that's broken apart by each taxing jurisdiction. We had some pretty healthy increases. Our state average is 6% valuation increases. We kind of continue on this roll of blowing through the state averages. We're about, again, 10% at this point. So, those numbers will be final in October. If we move on, we can see a look, a little bit different look at the budget, which includes the more detailed general fund, fund balances. We get down into a presentation that's called by functions, so it's just presented a little bit different way, and you can roll through, and you can see all the different funds that are presented there as you go through that. And that's also was included previously and also published, that gets published in the paper as well. So, I will end my presentation there and take any questions if you've got them.
Any questions or comments by board members? All right. Hearing none, then I'll entertain a motion to approve the proposed budget and levy.
So moved.
All right. There's a motion, a second on the floor. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, motion passes, and the budget for 2019-2020 is approved, and we'll move forward to our annual meeting this evening. Next up is the student transportation contract, excuse me, with Safeway. Is there a motion?
Mr. President, I would move to approve the contract as presented. Second.
Okay. There's a motion and a second before the board. This is a contract that was discussed at the last work session, and with the context of the history and whatnot, we didn't have the kind of increases that we had, you know, previously, they were much less, but we're looking at an overall kind of five-year average, and they're more in line with what they've been historically, so... Any other specific questions or comments regarding the Safeway contract? And this takes us through which year, Tim?
This will go through, this will go six years, and then there are two, there are two options for an additional one-year extension each, so a possibility of eight years.
Okay, possibility of eight years, but that wouldn't be inclusive of the current year?
Yes.
All right. And there are clauses in the contract for changes in circumstances, material changes in circumstances.
Right, yeah. If, yeah, that's under section 7.04. We added that language in. Both attorneys for Safeway and the school district reviewed that language, and everybody agreed upon that language.
With those clarifications, any further questions or comments?
Mr. President, just one, just one point. Doesn't change my motion, but I know in Article 1, 1.1, it specifies the first day of August 2019. There's still a double X in the opening paragraph. I'm assuming that will be August 01, but we want to get a real date in there. Otherwise, I moved approval of a contract that didn't have a complete date in it, so if we can fix that.
Yes, we'll, yeah, we'll make a modification to that.
Thank you.
Right. This vote will then authorize us to sign on behalf of the school district, so make sure that has the proper date. Any further questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Next up, we have resolution on the once-ent sales tax. This is a resolution discussed in detail at the last work session, but had been previously raised in the past when looking at alternative ways, and the legislature had a task force, I think it was for the last 18 months or two years, talking about how to fund schools and make it more fair. And this is definitely pertinent to our district, and I like to see the fact that we're a leader in this because of how much state aid we've lost. We need to have some kind of alternative ways of funding our schools rather than constantly replacing the lost state aid with just increases in property taxes. So, Nick, is there anything further you want to explain on this?
Just, you know, as a follow-up from the... tourism state. A lot of people travel through the state, or it's a destination, especially with all the lakes, that as they're paying for things, they're helping pick up some of that, pick up some of that tab for us. Yeah, and I think the reason, you know, going back to Rob's original point, this was started in Iowa. It was at a local level. It was county by county. They passed it in all 99 counties. Then after they passed it in all 99 counties, finally, the state said, we'll do a statewide pool. And I think, you know, and again, it was an effort to try to go slow at it, to try to, to try to do it. I think it could be a matter of passing it county by county. One of the benefits of doing a statewide pool is some of the rural counties and some of the more, or the less affluent counties would benefit at the same rate as your more affluent counties, because otherwise, what happens, and this is what they saw in Iowa, is your suburban centers, almost even more than your urban centers, where a lot of the retail was and things like that, those counties that had that, there was a definite disparity between those, and then let's say some of our more rural, rural areas. And so, that's why, to me, it would make sense to go after it from a statewide perspective so that there is more equity across the state in looking at this. Not opposed to the other way around, but I just, I've seen how firsthand it has helped districts not have to go to referendum. It has helped rural districts rebuild schools. It has helped urban districts rebuild schools. It's really been, you know, almost like a great equalizer when it comes to the facility side of, of school districts. And so, that's why, it was originally a statewide penny, whereas in Iowa, it was a county penny. It just basically, it was not, it was not a statewide to start with. It was at the county level first. So, this would be to kind of move past that unless, you know, again, through the debate and through the lobbying and through the conversation, the additional conversations statewide, if people said, you know what, you really need to start at a smaller scale, go to a county, you know, the county penny, and then, you know, scale it up like they've done in other states, not oppose that. But I think the big piece is, is just looking for an alternative measure, you know, ways to, you know, to help fund some of these schools, projects, and things like that. And I think Heather hit the nail on the head when you talked about it. It is, it can be a regressive tax, but it also can help offset the fact that, you know, some of our fixed income folks, when it comes to property tax, or even folks that are lower income and living in apartments and things like that, when we're raising property taxes, obviously, that's being passed on to them through higher rents and things along those lines. So, it has, it has some potential to do some real good, I think, across the board. So, it's not perfect, but really, there's a chance that they may not, as both, I think, Bob and Rob would tell you, that there's a chance it may not go anywhere. And they may say, you know, nope, and then, you know, come back again next year and try it again and continue to, you know, keep working it. Because just by you guys adopting this resolution doesn't guarantee that WASB will even take it up, or the, the, I can't, the general, what is it, the General Assembly, or what is it?
Right.
The delegate assembly will even take it up. I mean, it's just, at least it gets it on their radar, is kind of what we were thinking.
Okay, any further comments, questions? Not? All those in favor of adopting the resolution as currently drafted and amended just during this discussion? Do we have, okay, do we have a motion then now to adopt it with...
Move to approve.
Okay. All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed?
Nay.
All right. The motion is approved. And next, we have to go to closed session. I would entertain a motion with the wording in both A and B.
I move to approve the board will entertain a motion to convene in closed session. Paran A pursuant to Wisconsin statute, section 19.85, paran 1, paran E regarding the negotiations related to a settlement agreement and the mutual release of claims pertaining to a pending action. And B pursuant to Wisconsin statute 19.85, paran 1, paran C to consider the performance evaluation of administrative employees.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. There's a motion to go in closed session, and I want to point out that depending on what happens in closed session, we'll be reconvening in open session after that. So, it may be 10 minutes, it could be 20 minutes, but roll call vote. Bowman.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Hanson.
Aye.
Kattas.
Aye.
Logan.
Aye.
Whitaker.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
The motion is approved, and we will now convene to closed session. Right, we're back in open session, and I would entertain a motion to approve the discussion from closed session.
Move to approve.
Oops, sir.
Second.
And specifically, this is a move -- motion and a second to approve the agreement that will authorize me to sign the agreement on behalf of the board as discussed in closed session. Okay, all those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion is granted. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion by Sue, second by Bruce. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned until the annual meeting, which begins at seven?